Oh, it's so nice to be back in the Mary Hogan Music Room. Are you ready?
We're ready.
Okay. It is 7 o'clock on Monday, September 12th, and this is the ID4 Mary Hogan School Board. We're gonna call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Wow. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, we have no members of the public here. I mean, I guess technically you're both, you're a member of the public, but you're here for other purposes. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have two sets of minutes from March 15th. Thank you, Jason.
That's not worthy of thanks.
Thank you for finally getting them to us.
Yeah, public shaking is much more appropriate.
And from August 2nd, and these were, Amy, thank you, Amy. Are there any questions or corrections on those minutes? And we have bills.
Shall I go?
Go ahead.
With three sets? We have August 8th, read by myself and Victoria. General fund in the amount of $142,243.75. August 22nd, read by Leslie and myself. Food service, $34,158.65. And from the general fund, $132,469.83. And today, Victoria and I read bills, and we had a general fund in the amount of $1,144,204.2.
Beginning of the school year, jump up. It's a big number there. Any questions or concerns for Lorraine, or Leslie, or Victoria? Everything looked okay to you guys? Okay. All right.
As always, excellent general fund and financial people.
And our new administrative managers?
Administrative assistant, Karen Hill.
Up and running on the bills?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Okay. Report to the principal. Go, Tom.
All right. So, we welcome in several new faculty members this year. Kindergarten teacher Jenny Summer. Physical education and health teacher Charlie Marston. Our new Spanish instructor Florbeth Jimenez. Special educator Melissa Pienta. And new music teacher Sonya Koholik. Thank you, Sonya, for letting us share your space. We also have welcomed in a number of new paraprofessional staff as well. Our opening week was a combination of teachers working with their teammates to ready their room for instruction and working on unit plans, and professional development that was provided for our staff around effective use of assessment, and also focus on instructional practices in their areas. And, we opened with an unusual number of new students. So, we currently have 451 students here at the Mary Hogan School, which is significant to give you some feel of the jump. September of '15, last year, we were at 419, and currently we're at 451 today.
Wow.
And that 419 was followed by about approximately 18 new students net who came in in October through the remainder of the year, and then we had to jump up from there again up to the 451. So, we're growing. Our low was maybe seven or eight years ago, so we were down about 385 students. We're up.
That's great.
Heading back to 600?
I don't think so. You know, it's hard to tell, right?
When was it at 600?
About 15 years ago. 15, 18 years ago. Late 90s, early 2000s. Wow.
Because I think the high was right in there, that like sort of 612, 615 number, right in there.
Yeah. Or maybe it was mid 90s, like till the 90s, yeah.
We're up a bit. Couple new pieces of playground equipment you'll notice on the smaller playground. There's a new saucer swing out there and a new pirouette. One piece missing from the Hawksdown Playground. We had one piece that's broken a couple times, so we're working with the manufacturer. We had that removed because it wasn't working with the tolerances, the way of people that were using it, maybe not while school was in session, but after-school hours. You know, as much control over the number of kids that were using one apparatus. Great start. Veteran staff, all the folks who, all the folks that I mentioned who are new faculty come in as experienced, they're new here, but they come in as experienced faculty from other places, and with a great instructional team. Sort of remarkably smooth opening this year. So, we're delighted about that. I've been staying on message, and I want to extend a thank you out to all the parents who are dropping students off, that we have had just about 100% compliance with drivers staying with vehicles in the drop-off line in the morning, and it's made a huge difference, I think, in terms of the, not the flow out to the light, because I know that's the bottleneck, but the flow through the traffic and the safety with which people are able to move through the line. And if you drop people off, I'm sure you've noticed, but we've had, it's been morning after morning after morning where we've had folks following that directive about staying with their vehicle, and it's really paid off. From, big and small ways, a great opening. Thanks to the staff.
Questions for Tom? Just a quick question. The 451, is that, sounds weird, but is that actual students, or does that include partial preschoolers?
Yeah, it's a great question. It includes no preschoolers and no Head Start.
Okay.
So, that's our number of K through 6 that are here, that we have officially enrolled in or here and coming.
Awesome. Wow.
If you add in, if you add in bodies for Head Start and Early Ed, then we're up beyond that. And when I report that number, while we provide facility space, because I don't provide much in the way of, provide no programmatic oversight for Head Start or Early Ed, then I don't include that number. If, if you'd like that number, I'm happy to add that one in too, because then we're...
And we're close to 500 in the building when you add those in?
Right.
Or maybe, yeah, around 500.
Yep. And there're gonna be 100 or so staff members to support all those students together. Our own faculty, CSAC folks who are here, and then Head Start and Early Ed folks that are here as well. So, we're over 100 adults in the building as well.
Wow. Any other questions, comments for Tom? Thank you very much for a great start to the year, and thank your staff on behalf of the board too.
We will.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. All right. Superintendent, go for it.
So, on the final topic of enrollment, we are working on a policy report now. It's IKA, which is a class size report. So, that is going out to the Executive Committee, and all of you will get a copy of that as well, so you'll get to see what the enrollment looks like by grade level, both here and at all of our other schools as well. So, first topic is universal pre-K. This, you received a memo a few weeks ago that we sent out to providers as we work through some challenges, some legal challenges really, in the implementation of Act 166. The general outline of what happened, the Secretary of Administration sent out a memo to superintendents in mid-August and outlined some of the requirements for fingerprinting. Part of that memo included and engaged other parts of statute that hadn't been previously engaged in the fingerprinting process. One of those was Title 16, Section 255. Immediately after that memo came out, the next day, the VSBA and the VSA sent a joint memo to superintendent saying, "This memo changes things for you. You need to consult with counsel to determine how you're going to go about meeting these, the new requirements as outlined in the memo." What that meant was, the, the kind of, in a simplified way, the sharing of fingerprints couldn't happen anymore. We had to get secondary fingerprints directly to us, as opposed to getting them from another organization like ANESU, as an example. So, we are currently working with providers and with the AOE to get through this kind of murky legal water to be able to pay all of our providers on time. They are expecting payment by September 30th, and so we are kind of, I mean, our main goal right now is pushing AOE to see if we can fabricate a fix that's gonna work, that's gonna keep us legally in line with what has been suggested, both from the AOE and from statute, which, as I said, kind of differ, which is what is so challenging in this situation. But, but there, you know, for, I think for some of the programs, it's not as much of an issue to defer payment until those fingerprints come back, but for others, it is more significant because they've reduced tuition. So, we are working night and day. Caitlin Steele, our new Director of Teaching and Learning, has been great. She's been working with and communicating with all the providers, and it's kind of her full-time job until we figure this out. So, it's unfortunate. It's an unfortunate rough start to something that we were looking forward to starting in a much smoother way. We are in unison with the other Addison SU's. So, Addison Northeast and Addison Northwest, we're working together, and we have Meg Baker, who works, who is our coordinator, basically our pre-K coordinator for the three SU's. So, she's been really helpful in kind of working on behalf of all three of us. So, I hope to have some better information soon. We're working on, as I said, a couple things that we're hoping will work out to be able to provide that payment to everyone by September 30th.
Do people have questions from Peter?
So, any, okay. I guess one of my, a couple of my questions are, well, first, the implications for our budget, and maybe this question for Josh and Tom too, but we count these kids, or partially count these kids as, for our enrollment. If we don't make the payment in time, or we don't have all of the ducks in a row, legally, will we be able to count them?
Yeah.
We will.
Yeah.
Even if we pay late?
Yeah.
Okay. And the families, I mean, obviously, it's a pain for the school and for the providers, but is it affecting the families and their ability to pay for childcare or preschool?
The only way it would affect families is if a program couldn't pay the staff and then tried to put some of that burden essentially onto parents to pay for that portion in some kind of two-week stopgap. Many of our providers will be ready by the date, so we're already starting to process some of those. It looks like some won't, and there's a backlog, and it takes four weeks to get back, and has to go to the FBI, and so it's a kind of a process that's partly out of our control. So, there's the potential that a program could do that, but then it would be a very short window probably, until they got that information back and were paid.
And these, so these are the providers with whom we have the agreement for the four-year-olds? Does it also include the three-year-olds? Because I know that last year, we had to backtrack a little bit on the universal pre-K, so this is actually...
It's three and four, yeah.
It is a three and four-year-old. Okay. And is it just the approved providers, or are there any home providers or others, or is it mostly just centers?
No, it's some smaller home providers that are approved, though. So, it's all approved providers.
Okay.
So, they had a, you know, they've been working on a checklist for about a year of things that they had to meet to pass the threshold for the state to be a qualified provider.
Provider, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, some are smaller.
Some of them are really small, yeah.
And those are the ones that are most challenged by this. So, places like Mary Johnson have, you know, the ability to weather a little bit of time until that comes in, but other places are not, so...
Right. Okay.
Yeah. It's very frustrating. I mean, it's, and, you know, we feel kind of caught in the middle of wanting to do what we're legally responsible for, and also want to do what we, you know, have said we're going to do.
Yeah. And it's because they were not satisfied with us accepting fingerprint information that had been gathered by providers? It was that we had to gather it directly?
Yeah. The memo essentially made pre-K another grade of school, so it took it completely within the school.
Oh, I see.
That's how that statute was engaged.
Okay.
You know, the, I think the most frustrating part is, there hasn't been follow-up communication from the agency to kind of clarify that. So, there are just, there's a lot of conflicting information that we're sifting through to figure out a way forward.
Got it. Okay.
Lots of gray.
Lots of gray. Are there other questions?
So, I have to deal with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just feel, I feel bad for the providers who are kind of like tearing their hair out.
Oh, yeah. So, they've all been fingerprinted, and now they're all gonna be fingerprinted again.
Yeah. It's bureaucracy at its best, is what it is. Yeah.
Have anybody, has anybody heard from family? I got a call from one family about it, so I was just curious about if you, if you're not hearing anything. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for managing that.
Yeah.
Okay.
International Baccalaureate, I've got a flyer which you may have already seen, but this is a nice color copy. So, this is part of the information that we've prepared this month as we enter our final, our final month of our inquiry process, which began really kind of towards the tail end of our strategic plan. So, we've been looking at, talking about, and researching International Baccalaureate for over a year. Our work groups are meeting this week and next week to finalize the work that they've done. They have gone to, they've done a lot of reading, they've done a lot of study, they've gone to conferences and learned with other people, either looking at IB or practicing IB. Again, there are three different programs we're looking at, the primary years, middle years, and diploma programs. And the, kind of the culminating piece of this is going to be the IB feasibility study. That will include everything from kind of where we are, what we think IB would bring, looking at a gap analysis of how far away are we from what that future reality could be, looking at funding and how we would fund it, and then making a recommendation to the board. So, that is planned for the week of October 3rd. We're still, we might be changing that date. We're gonna look at that. But, the carousel meeting coming up is where we're gonna be doing a presentation. I think all our, I mean, I know all of our leaders are gonna be there to present on International Baccalaureate. We'll probably have some teachers there too. And we will be sending that feasibility study out to all board members, you know, in the board mailing, so you'll have a chance to really review it. You know, we've gathered some research, we've, it's fairly exhaustive.
Does it include a cost estimate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions for Peter?
I'm curious, who's receiving this flyer?
I got it at the fifth-grade parent's night.
Well, I mean, are, is this only going out to parents? Or is the community receiving the information about this? And like, please contact your local school for kinds of locations. I'm hoping you're gonna be publicized and go without having people having to call a school to find out about it.
It's primarily this month. It's primarily coming from schools, so buildings, every building has taken on to put on an IB information night. It's happening mostly at open houses, so it happened at the fifth-grade night. It's happening in all of those venues in schools. That's where we have the most people. Our experience with community forums and inviting community, it has been, has been not as good as it should be. So, the open house and a place like that where you have a lot of families coming together is generally better, and you also get a better cross-section, I think, sometimes of all of our community. Sometimes when we have a committee forum about a curricular issue, we have a certain segment of our population. So, I think that's it for September. I think that that was a good plan. And that's kind of, that's kind of how we're finishing out the community outreach.
So, IB is being talked about at the parent information nights, but there's not gonna be a separate IB information night? Because the parent information nights only happen for first, third, and fifth grades, right? So, if your kids are in second and fourth grade, you wouldn't go to one of those nights?
So, we also mentioned it briefly at the Mesa meeting. And there have been board offerings as well, the Ripton meeting in particular, that was open to community members, where there was a pretty broad...
In the spring.
Pretty broad presentation there as well. And Peter mentioned that as well. The number of folks who've come out, if it's just on a curricular topic, has been, it's been really small. So, it has been our chance at those parent nights to have a bigger cross-section of folks.
And what about the parents who won't, you know, who have kids in even grades, who wouldn't end up pointed, and these are getting the flyer? Are they gonna come home with kids on Friday folders? Would they...
We hadn't, we hadn't planned on sending it home that way, but we're, and we're happy to, it's been talked about in a number of forums throughout this forum and others.
But I don't think as a member of the public who wasn't coming to school board meetings that I would have heard a single thing about it.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think this has been very well publicized to the general public at large, unless you're watching board meetings, which...
Everybody watches our board meetings.
How many people does it watch them?
We, I mean, right before the end of the year, we did a lot of outreach and publicized as many places as we could. So, I think our forum here in this room actually was like mid-May, I believe.
Yeah, May's a really hard time to get people to come.
Right. No, I remember that. I was here, there were people here, but I thought there was gonna be more of that sort of thing in the fall as I got closer to making a decision about it. Is that not happening?
It could.
So, go ahead, Jason.
What I'm hearing from folks is that maybe some other sort of mechanism for outreach might be useful. I'm wondering if it's worth doing a little op-ed in the ID&amp;Indy or something that doesn't just reach school populations that's informative, might be useful.
From Portch Forum?
Which of a lot of people...
There's a page on the website, so publishing this a little bit more, getting, you know, through social media, Front Porch Forum, the paper, maybe helpful.
There's a page on the website about IB?
There is. It's buried, so it should be, it should have a front-page thing, but it's under Departments, Curriculum, and IB Inquiry.
Wait, I'm on the Mary Hogan website.
You go to the ACSU website, so it's on the ACSU.
I was there first, and I didn't see it there either.
And the brochure, is it there? You can link to the brochure. So, Departments, Curriculum, and Assessment.
I see.
And then IB Inquiry. So, those of you following us at home at ACSU.org, under Departments, Curriculum and Assessment, IB Inquiry, and you can get more information about it. But, yeah, it does seem like more outreach would be in order. I know that the ones in May were not that well-attended, because it's a hard time of year for parents in particular, but Lorraine's point about other community members is important. Have you been doing outreach with your, with your new staff member?
With Caitlin?
No.
Erica. I'm not specific to IB. I mean, she's, she's just kind of getting started and getting to know people, so she's not out and about on this front. I guess my feeling is, in general, the format of having a forum and inviting everyone to come, we've never really had good turnout in that way. So, I think other ways, like Front Porch Forum and other online kind of ways to communicate. I think the paper is a good idea, too.
Go out through the Schoolhouse News email list?
Yeah. Could you do an email?
Do you know any other newsletters that go out in Friday folders?
Yeah.
I mean, it just seems, I agree, when you've got a captive audience, like a parent information night, and they're coming anyway, that's a great time to bring it up, but if that only reaches every other grade...
Well, most schools have sent this in a, like a folder to go home, so that's, that's happening throughout.
Say it again?
Most schools are sending this out either, not this exact color copy, but a copy.
This must be expensive, the color copies.
But it is, it is going home to families.
Okay. Well, maybe it should go home to Mary Hogan.
Yeah, no, it should. It should.
I mean, there was on the last mail-in at my home calendar, it talked about the IB process and... Didn't the ID&amp;Indy do something in the spring?
They did, yeah.
Maybe they haven't do it here now.
Like a fall, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
I mean, if they'd run it soon, since the presentation's gonna be to the ACSU in October, it'd be helpful probably for the ID&amp;Indy to have them on something soon.
Yeah.
The October meeting is also in Shoreham, which, it's great that we're spreading our meetings around, but it's not the most accessible location for the majority of our population, so it would be great if we could get people there to hear your presentation.
Yeah.
I'm assuming you'll be there, Dick? Yeah. So, watch MCTV. But, yeah, I mean, one of the reasons I wanted to meet tonight is so we could get this information, because it hasn't been as out there for our, for every school board. Are there other ideas for Peter, or questions about IB? Lorraine?
So, these pre-meetings that you're having before the October board meeting, they're gonna be discussing things like cost and that kind of stuff with the public, or just the general concept of IB?
They're talking more about the general concept, not concept really, but talking about the program as a whole.
And then at the October meeting, we'll be getting that kind of information, and we'll be expected to vote that night about it?
Mm-hmm. That's, that's the plan.
It's the ACSD Board that's voting on it, correct?
Yeah.
So, the board could also vote to delay the vote, if we don't have enough information and don't feel comfortable.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking, as a taxpayer, if I were to find out that, and I don't know what the cost is, if it's a significant increase or decrease, or whatever it is, but I think that's, and it's not really up to the, I mean, all the taxpayers, if you're planning on changing an entire concept of power of teaching, and it's gonna be at a significant increase, for example, I might wanna know that and have my say before the board approves or doesn't approve whatever you're recommending. I mean, I'm just thinking...
Yeah. The cost won't be significant in terms, if you look at our overall budget, it won't be significant. I mean, part of our process of building unified budget is also looking at all of our PD funds across all of our schools, and basically focusing those monies to build what we, what we wanna build. So, I think some of how it's going to be funded is looking at our budget and, and basically funding our vision.
And this would roll out under the new Unified District.
Yeah.
So, we're not gonna vote on this as individual boards?
No.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We're not gonna vote on this as individual districts?
Right. No, mine.
How has your outreach and work with the faculty, do you feel like there's broad support among teachers and staff?
Based on, based on all the conversations I've been having with faculty, I've been talking to everyone.
Really?
I try, but, yeah, I mean, throughout the, for example, you know, I probably talk to four... to 40 or 50 teachers at the start of the school year just about how things are, and International Baccalaureate comes up, it's been a major focus. My kind of anecdotal takeaway from talking to staff members that aren't on the work groups, so the work groups have been really focused, they're the experts, and they really are representative for the faculty, they kind of represent everyone. But faculty that aren't a part of that are, as they learn more, are excited about what IB is, what it could bring, and its alignment with the kinds of things we've been talking about in Vermont with Act 77 and moving away from a traditional paradigm to a more student-centered one. And I think one of the things that's most exciting for people is the fact that you're no longer in isolation as a teacher. And, you know, the traditional paradigm is you are in your classroom, and you are teaching grade three, you're teaching grade four, you may have some teaming you do with others, but not to a great extent. IB really breaks down the classroom environment so that you are thinking more interdisciplinary and transdisciplinary, which really is a very different way of planning. So, you know, our traditional approach is you are studying English, and then you're transitioning, you have a little break, and now we're going to do math, and now we're going to do science. Whereas IB is really trying to more integrate those into experiences for students where they're asking questions and they're doing inquiry and blending those things together. So as a teacher, it's really exciting. It's also, I think, challenging in some ways, too, where instead of having things in compartments, you're really having to think about all of those standards that you're teaching towards, but you have to do it in this combined interdisciplinary way. But that's kind of what life is. That's what we experience. We don't experience science as we walk down the road, and then we transition to another subject, or it's all blending together. And it's just, I think it makes more sense. I'd want, if I was a kid again, and I would like to be, I would want to learn this way.
Did the working groups develop this? Does, has been developing outreach materials?
Primarily administration has been. This was done kind of summer into fall to provide some information about where we are.
Okay, are there other questions? Okay.
And we are presenting again next week, too, at the ACSD meeting on the 19th.
And also, isn't there, at the high school Parents' Night, they said there's going to be a presentation on how things would change at the high school?
Yep.
Would it change the block scheduling?
Probably, yeah.
Caitlin, when you say presenting next week, you mean a full-length presentation?
Not the full presentation with everything, but just an update on where we are.
Okay, so just like basically telling us tonight?
I'll make it better, but yeah.
I hope so. Just kidding, just kidding, he's doing fine.
Okay.
You don't have to qualify that. You don't have to qualify that.
The ACSD board meeting is next Monday at 6:30 at, where is it?
At the...
In the library at the high school. So if you would like to come in person to ask questions as a member of the public, that would be great. You should definitely come. Okay, any other IB-related questions or information? Awesome, okay, thank you. So the next is, are there other questions for Peter before we move on? Just about anything. Throw it out there. Okay. So next, I asked Josh to give us an FY '16 financial report at the end of the year. We weren't quite sure where we were at, and we didn't have the best information throughout the year. So Josh has done a good job of summarizing FY '16 so we can see how we ended up last, so this is last year's budget. So take it away. If you want to come, if you want to come closer, you don't have to be so far away. We don't bite.
You can just sit here if you want, just the camera.
I have a couple of paper copies, if anybody doesn't have.
I'll hand them out.
Copy on the chairs. I only brought three. So copies of what was actually sent in the mailer.
I thought the large print stuff.
I'm good.
Yeah, that looks good.
Thank you.
So the first page basically just did a summary that goes through kind of the major overages and surpluses, deficits. Just to get to the bottom line, because that's what people typically turn to, the fiscal year ended with a budget surplus of $54,000. That included the 120 that was reserved for tax reduction in fiscal year 14. In revenue, there was three major items. There was $26,000 in tuition from two tuition students that wasn't budgeted for, which is good. And then for special education, there were two intensive and extraordinary costs the state reimbursed us for, about $74,000 more in expenses that we incurred. You can see down under expenditures, that special education was over $45,000, so that covered the overages we experienced in special ed. And where I'm going from, sorry, I should have backed up, is page two of the mailing is this General Fund Summary Operating Statement, which you guys have probably all seen a number of times. Under expenditures, so regular programs were over $180,000, and so I just hit four of the highlights there. Instructional assistance salaries, which I believe are PERS, was over $80,000. Tom and I had talked about it a little while ago, and I think that had something to do with those extra 18 or 19 students that came in in October last year. Early retirement, there was a payout that wasn't budgeted for. Substitutes, there were some attorney leaves that also weren't budgeted for. And in purchase regular ed services, those are regular ed services that are provided by special ed PERS and not reimbursable, and so those get pushed down into regular education costs. If you have any questions, please holler out.
I just had a question on that last one. So if the regular ed services had been covered by regular ed PERS, we would have been reimbursed?
No, so the way that special ed is budgeted for is Vicki Wells puts together her service plans, and she puts together teacher and/or para costs with those. And then twice during the year, in October and in April, there are surveys that are done, and then the state uses those surveys to reimburse. So if a para that thought was going to be budgeted for at .8, based on the surveys, only .7, then the state only reimburses for .7.
And you said the bottom line was the 54,995?
Mm-hmm.
On the report, the bottom line is 65. What's the difference? Sorry.
No, that's fine.
It's the 65.
Yeah, the 65 is correct.
Is it the 65, the correct number? Okay. That's a better number, so go with that. Okay, just wanted to make sure I was understanding it.
No, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Special education and expenditures, we talked about that. Regular ed support services was over 65. Those are basically CSAT costs for student support services that are not covered in an IEP plan. Health, early retirement just wasn't used. An employee left their plan in the health insurance, and in operations and maintenance, there was about $100,000 there. And a very large part was fuel oil and propane, or about $60,000 because of our warm winter. Eric Warren, the facilities manager for the school and all the rural elementary schools, just completed some work on his own as opposed to hiring it out, which he had budgeted for. Insurance was just under, supplies were under, there was a furniture lineup that was under, and I think that had to do with what I heard, that basically Tom was told to stop spending back in March or April because it wasn't clear where the budget was, which we hope, but not hope, which we will correct as we move forward this year. So in the mailer, you've got the actual, the very detailed revenue report, the detailed expenditure report, the balance sheets. So I won't go through any of those unless there's specific questions in that stuff.
Are there other questions for Josh? Lorraine?
Mine's not necessarily fairly for Josh. Back to what Victoria was asking about the regular ed provided by the special ed para, is that one of those deals where a kid doesn't technically qualify for special ed but needs special ed services?
Needs the service that could be provided for by a para that we have on staff, and sometimes on staff, sometimes not, but in the, usually on staff and in the budget as a special ed para. But we may have assigned them based on student need with a student who's a regular ed student and may be getting some additional service either through a 504 or an educational support team plan. And just the challenge in the general in that is that you're creating, will be creating a budget this fall for next year, and with the changes that we're seeing, some 80 or 90 students that are coming and going in a year, a number of those students may have significant programming needs, and it has been a challenge to anticipate those when you haven't met the student yet, and don't know what's on their plan, or you don't know what their needs are.
This is always kind of an issue, right? Because it is still unpredictable with the kids coming and going.
It is. It felt like we had a period of stability. And if I could get specifics on numbers, but in terms of the, you know, I'm used to seeing 40 or so students coming in that are new in a given half-year period. That's apart from kindergarten, and that number's gone up to above 60, 70, approaching 80 in some cases. And there's that flow in and out.
One of the benefits with the new budget will be that it's all in the same pot, so the flows in and out of Mary Hogan will be offset with flows in and out of other schools.
Well, you can imagine if it's hard for us, what it is for schools that have 50 kids in them.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Are you seeing at the other schools on a percent basis the same types of in and out?
Not to the degree that we have here.
Yeah.
We have a slight uptick this year in enrollment in a number of our schools, from five to 10 students, which is significant when you have your schools 80 students.
Right, right.
But yeah, I think there's more transition here.
The urban school.
I was at St. Mary's, this year, when we absorbed a lot of students from St. Mary's.
Sure, and you know, so there's a class size implication that we found out about in the spring. The decision was made, a lot of us in the community had heard some talk about it, and you wanted to welcome those students in who were coming, but you didn't.
A bunch of them.
Yeah, right. But that's been, oh, it's been not quite a dozen students told, because some students went other places, and there were students that were heading to the middle school and other schools.
So that whole jump isn't solely from St. Mary's?
Oh, no.
It's a jump from other things as well?
It's primarily families that are moving here into Middlebury or East Middlebury from away.
Okay, do you have more to...
Yeah, one of the last documents is the expenditure report for '16 and '17. This is really just an idea of where the budget currently exists. I will say that encumbrances are, have typically not been required to be all input until the end of September. So this is not very accurate at the moment. It's also not very easy to read, and I wouldn't, if it wasn't my job, I wouldn't want to read this thing either. So that's one of the things that I'll be doing this year, is going through and actually providing and creating a monthly report that we can, that we will provide monthly, that you can actually read and make sense, and we'll have a projected budget and balance for the year. So when we get to, you know, February, March, we'll actually have, hopefully have a good handle on where we're going to end at the year and can make sure that we use the money that is in the budget.
That's excellent. Thank you for doing that. Other questions for Josh or comments? Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good news. Okay, are there other business, other topics for discussion? Our next meeting is October 3rd, although that may be changed or not.
Could.
It could change potentially.
Bring it to the meeting on Monday.
It is a holiday, so we'll talk about that. It's the first day of Rosh Hashanah. So, but it's right now scheduled for, what day of the week is that?
Monday.
Monday, October 3rd in Shoreham, starting at 5:30.
Six.
Six. Cannot get my times correct.
It used to be 5:30, so you're not...
Is it 5:30 for food?
We switched it to six this year from 5:30. It's now six to 6:45. Local district meeting, and then seven o'clock is ACSD Board.
No food anymore?
There's food.
So 5:30 if we want food?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's why I was like, all about the food!
So you have 5:30.
The free salad is good!
Lots of apples.
Lorraine?
Is it your intent that we will be meeting monthly, even, you know, on the off?
My thought, and what we had discussed in the spring, is we would meet every other month.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Which is why I was surprised to hear we're meeting tonight.
Yeah, so the reason that we're meeting tonight is because the meeting in the summer was an unplanned meeting, and there were some things, the IB, well, specifically the early childhood education, wanting to know if it had budget implications, and then the financial report from the end of last fiscal year, because we had asked Josh to do that when he came on. So it felt like there were a couple of things that could have been potentially, have potential implications for ID4. And, yeah, because there's some big things happening. So I don't think we will meet in November unless something comes up. But then we would meet in December on the Carousel meetings. Yeah, because last spring, we had scheduled this meeting, this night's meeting, or last June, we had scheduled this meeting. And, pardon me?
So would it be November?
So we'll meet in October at the Carousel meeting. We'll meet first, and then the ACSD Board meets second, and then...
So there's no ACSU Board anymore?
There is technically an ACSU Board, but it's not really meeting. So those of you, you're on it, and Jason and I are on it, but it's really not meeting unless there's something that comes up. Even the executive committee is...
The executive committee is meeting on Monday, next Monday.
Oh, okay.
At 5:30.
So I won't be there next Monday at all. So that was another, frankly, reason I wanted to meet tonight, because I won't be able to be there, and had asked the ACSD Board to reschedule that meeting, but they weren't, so I wanted to hear some of this information. But yeah, so we'll meet October 3rd, and then probably not again until December, whenever the December meeting is scheduled. It's...
It's the 5th.
It's the 5th.
At Cornwall.
At Cornwall. So unless something comes up. Yeah, so just for bills purposes, too, and minutes, that's the schedule.
Yeah, I was going to say, so the minutes schedule that I signed out has September, November, January.
Oh, sorry, Amy, sorry.
Everybody will just have to ship back.
Okay. And then the bills, you should obviously still be doing the bills, and then we'll just do them in lumps like we did tonight. Okay. Anything else? And, yeah.
Could I ask if any of you would be interested in putting this on Front Porch Forum that spend time there?
I can put some text up on it.
Okay. And so you can link, you can link on our website. So this, in color, is on the website, too.
That'd be great. And after Jason does it, then we can... And after Jason does it, then we can share it, too, just so people get more information. Do you have a PDF version of this? You can share, I can share it on Facebook.
I think...
Is it, oh, it's right on the...
I think it's on there, yeah.
It's on the, okay.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Great, thanks, guys. I have a motion to adjourn, or can I have a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Awesome, at 7:51. All right, thanks, Dick.